City of Lawrence Common Council, the meeting is now called to order. Today is Tuesday, September 6, 2022, and it's now 6:30 PM. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Precious heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here tonight. Lord, I ask for wisdom upon everybody here. I ask for peace and I ask for safety upon all the public safety members that are working this evening and every day. Lord, I just pray that you allow this meeting to flow smoothly and just touch our city as we continue to move forward. In your precious heavenly name we pray, amen.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Yes, I, Council President, I wanted to make a quick announcement. There is a community outreach event going off at the Lawrence Church of God off 42nd and Post this weekend. It is from 12 to 2:00, and they will be doing free hot dogs and burgers to the community and just doing an outreach for the neighborhood. So I just wanted to let those that are paying attention online in the area and to know, so.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Counselor Chevlat?
Just want to say a thanks to Scott Salisbury. I saw him in your earlier areas. He hosted Maria and I last week on a ride along to visit all the water plants and the wells. Was very informative, something I've been wanting to do for years. If you haven't done that, Scott's a great guide. He likes to talk about utilities and water and inflow and outflow and everything else. But I wanted to thank him for his time. I really appreciated it.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Ms. Wells?
I want everybody to know that I visited the gentleman that bought the old marsh on Franklin Road to see how progress was coming on the new grocery store, and he is making progress. Having a little problem getting some of the coolers and refrigeration equipment, I guess a sign of the times. Did discuss with him about the issue with the car cruise-in that we're having over on Lotton Loop, and he volunteered his location for a car cruise-in. So tentatively, a week from tonight, there'll be the first car cruise-in at that location. So everybody wants to come by and look at the old cars or the new cars or whatever. Be welcome to have you, and look forward to everybody be there, have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wells. Any other councilors? Okay, point of order, we do have a quorum tonight. All councilors are present. Counselor Rusa Moroff is on video tonight. Counselor Giles will not be here this evening. We will have a roll call vote for all votes. Next on the agenda, we have approval of amendments of regular meetings, August 1st and August 17th, 2022. Is there a motion?
A motion?
Motion, Counselor Freeman?
Second.
Second, Counselor Whitfield, any discussion? Roll call vote, Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Counselor Denny?
I'll second.
Second, Counselor Wells. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just have one, one point of discussion. There was a question that came up about one of the vouchers. It was a large voucher for, um, let's see, where was it at? For Grady Brothers and Voice. Just in the description, it says 2021, 2022. The Controller answered that question. I sent it to him over the weekend, and he said this was work that was done, and it was actually a grant, and the grant money was received earlier this year, and this is actually a first-round payment for the work performed. So the 2021 portion was just in the invoice description, but it was done this year.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have reports of committees. Code?
Nothing.
No report from Code?
Except the litter.
Um, the vehicle inspection proposal number 162022 is recommended?
As well as the litter.
Out of Code, yes.
Okay, as well as the litter. The proposal number?
Twenty.
Twenty, 2022. Okay, great, thank you. Finance?
Madam Chair, we met tonight. We've had three items onto our agenda, and we've discussed those over several meetings, and all three were recommended out of finance tonight unanimously. That was Resolution Number 18, Proposal Number, excuse me, Resolution Number 12, Proposal Number 18, and Proposal Number 19. And for all three, the administration is here to answer questions if the full council has questions on those tonight as well.
Okay, we'll get to those under unfinished business if there's any discussion there. Thank you. Next, we have an introduction this evening. I would like Judy Byron, and I hope I'm pronouncing it right, Elana Thompson, to please come forward. Oh, sure.
I'm here mostly to thank you all for your many years of support. As most of you know, I am retiring as the Executive Director for Arts for Lawrence, and I feel very confident in the sustainability of Arts for Lawrence as I leave. But I did want to remind you about the impact that we've made in the community, thanks to your support. This is our 2021 annual report, and I will tell you that our 2022 annual report should exceed that by 200%. We've been open since the pandemic for 15 months, and in those 15 months, we have offered all kinds of programming to the community. This summer in particular, we've just finished up Fridays at the Fort Concert Series, a classical Sundays at the Fort Concert Series, a Shakespeare at the Fort, outdoor play, films at the Fort. We have free urban line dancing, free poet's laureate every month, and all of this is free to our community members. And by using the Americans for the Arts Economic Impact Calculator, we recognize that we have provided over $1 million of economic impact to the city of Lawrence. $30,000 of that goes directly to the city government. So, thank you so much for all of your support for the many years that I have been here, and let me introduce to you my successor, Elena Thompson.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I am really excited. This is my first, very first day on the job, so it's been a full day, but I'm glad to be here. I am a resident of Lawrence. I've lived here for 18 years. I started out at 56th and Franklin, moved over by Indian Lake, and now I'm over there right by the fort. And so I, I believe in the city, I'm invested in the city, and I look forward to working with each one of you, so thank you so much.
Thank you, nice to meet you, thank you. And Judy, on behalf of myself and the council, because I'm, I know how everyone feels about you and the service that you have rendered to, to the city and this community, we'd like to just thank you for your years of service and wish you well in your retirement, although I don't really feel like you'll probably be retired. But thank you, Judy, and welcome, Elena. Next on the agenda, we have Baker Tilly presentation on the 2023 budget that will be presented by Brandon Scruggs.
Hello.
Good evening.
Like she said, I'm Brandon Scruggs. I work closely with Paige Sansone, so I've helped a lot with this report. I'm going to keep this really short and sweet, just because we've already went over this a few times. There's just some updates and a few comments I'd like to make. And then following this, Humphrey is going to play a budget, I believe, video for all of you. If you'll turn to page eight, we're going to skip around a lot, so bear with me. Page eight is a, is a list of recommendations that we had, and one of them that is no longer on this page as of today is the levy excess appeal, which may come as a shock to all of you, which it came a shock to us as well. At the end of last week, the DLGF released different growth numbers for 2020, 2021, and 2022, and those numbers don't normally change, however they did, and now the city is no longer eligible for the appeal. But we will revisit it next year, hopefully it'll be a different case. But I just wanted to make you aware of that from the get-go. And I believe I saw that on the agenda as well, so.
Thank you so much.
You can cross that off your list. The next page I want to go to is 13. Oh, and I do want to mention, this is still in draft form. You know that you don't have your public hearing until the beginning of October, and just in case changes come at a later date than today, we didn't want to finalize this and then have to issue a second final copy, so we'll be updating it and getting you a final report. On page 13, the only thing I want to point out is, in column 2023, if you go down, it's line 49, you'll see that you're still expected to spend $232,000 of your cash reserves in the general fund. This isn't really too big of a concern, but I just wanted to point that out because I know you guys like to have a balanced budget, and we always recommend a balanced budget. And you're also getting down to that, kind of the floor where we say you don't want to go below 15% of your balance percentage, and you're starting to flirt with that line. So I just wanted to make you aware of that as if you continue to look at your budgets. The next page I want to go to is 16. It's the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund. Again, since you know how this report works, I just want to point out on line 26, you are spending down that fund tremendously, so just going forward, that's something you're going to want to take a look at and be mindful of.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the line again?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Line 26, on page 16, you're spending down, as of right, as of the current budget for 2023, without it being adjusted past today, you're still spending $1.3 million out of your cash reserves for that fund. I just wanted to make you aware of that and point it out. I don't know if there's any wiggle room in your budget where you could adjust that, but just wanted to make you aware. Next page I'd like to look at is 22. We'll be looking at line 24 for 2023. Again, just pointing out that as of right now, you're spending down your cash reserves by $68,000, so you may want to look into making budget cuts before the budget's finalized, just to make that balanced. The next page, 25, it's the Lit Public Safety Fund. This is a fund where you've been spending down your cash reserves on an annual basis, and as it is currently presented, if you spend your entire budget for this year minus a little bit of what we estimate you to underspend based on historical, you will end up in the negative for 2023, which is going to need to be evaluated. There, something needs to be moved from this fund, or you need to do a budget reduction of some sort, because you don't want, obviously don't want to end up in the red at the end of 2023. Again, just another thing I wanted to make you aware of. Next page is 28. That is your EMS and ambulance fund. We are estimating that you're going to underspend this year's budget, which leaves you at a good ending cash reserve. However, on line 18, you'll see that your budget is currently out of balance by $270,000. That's another one of your main funds, so that might be a fund you want to look at reducing the budget, because you will end up eating into your cash reserves rather quickly. Next page is 31. This is your Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund. The reason I wanted to highlight this fund is because now that there's no gun permits, the revenue in this fund is significantly lower than it typically is, which is resulting
The total requested general fund for 2023 is 25.3 million.
in a deficit. So you're going to need to look to move costs from this fund, because the revenue stream
Approximately 78% of our proposed general fund is for public safety services.
just simply isn't there anymore.
This budget proposal is a balanced and responsible fiscal plan that maintains our 20% operating reserve for the fifth consecutive year.
And that was the last fund that I wanted to point out and comment on.
This budget proposal focuses on connecting Lawrence, starting with public engagement.
Like I said, I wanted to keep it short and sweet, but I can answer any questions that
The city hosted 18 public budget workshops for a total of 20 hours.
you have at this time.
I'm going to open it up to any councilors who have questions, might need a little
These were an opportunity for department heads to receive public input throughout their budget process, as well as answer any questions. We believe this has been a great step towards connecting Lawrence, and we look forward to
time to, to review it, so we may not have anything this evening, but we certainly can
working with our common council as they consider our recommended budget proposal.
reach you all via email, and I'm sure you'll be, be back as well.
We are very hopeful that we're about to get a full million-dollar match on paving
So thank you so much for the presentation.
that will begin actually next spring.
Thanks for having me.
That will be our seventh and eighth million dollars of paving that will get done in the
Next, we have Humphrey that's going to do the budget video presentation.
city of Lawrence in the last six years.
We have money in our budget to do strip patching, sidewalk repairs, tree removal out of the city right away.
We would like to use a small part of our operating reserve to pay for a couple of smaller projects for the city.
For the 2023 budget, the top priority has got to be taking care of our people. That can be done by offering good solid raises for our officers, not only retain the talent that we have, but to attract new talent when we go through our hiring processes. We are competing with agencies such as Fishers, Carmel, Noblesville, Westfield, even Indianapolis. We're competing with those agencies for top talent and to retain our current talent. We have good working conditions here in Lawrence. We have a great fleet, we have great facilities. We need to continue to invest in our people. Our people are our biggest asset.
Where we are as a fire department right now is light years ahead from where we were. Public safety is changing daily. We just cannot let the technology in public safety pass us by. It's about giving our firefighters and EMS tools to be more proficient and better serve the community, and that's what we work for.
The 2023 Parks Budget Proposal focuses on connecting our citizens through new and updated amenities. In 2022, we were able to bring these pickleball courts to our community that have been extremely popular, and we look forward to bocce ball, cornhole, and a picnic area that can bring our families together. Community park will see some facelists in 2023. We'll be adding new playground equipment, and also our baseball facility there will see some upgrades with some lighting, scoreboard, and a PA system.
A lot of kids from this neighborhood, this particular area of Lawrence, participate here, so it's imperative that we work on the field and get them up to specifications that they can play on.
One of the goals of the city has always been to try to find a way to connect all parts of the city. Took a big step in that direction with the successful application of the Trails Grant.
We will begin work on the Lee Road and 63rd Street Trail and expand our Tour Lawrence program to better connect our community.
We want to look at our learning management system. This will give an opportunity for us to have consistent training for all of our employees. We also still continue to focus on our diversity within our work areas, as well as relating with the people in our community.
By adding DeMarisa Arhida and making her in charge of our Latino affairs, we definitely have been able to bring more of our Latino residents into the city.
One priority we're working on is making the Fortman Farmers Market fully bilingual so we can all feel at home. Connecting people to Lawrence is key.
We really are trying to make sure that people feel very comfortable coming to the city center, participating in our city events.
Whether it be from Black History Month celebration, all the way through the year end at Winterfest, we look forward to continuing to see everyone enjoy these events as we grow them in the city of Lawrence.
Our 2023 budget proposal will serve as the basis for our submittal to the GFOA as we attempt to receive our seventh consecutive budget award. We look forward to connecting Lawrence with this fiscally responsible budget proposal.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the public hearing for proposal number eight, 2022. Proposal number 18, 2022, introduced by Counselor Wells. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a new schedule of sewer utility rates and charges. Do we have anyone sign up for the public hearing? No? Okay, I'm going to give one opportunity. Is there anyone who would like to make comment for proposal number 18, 2022? Sewer utility rates, any comment? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Next, we have unfinished business. Proposal number 16, 2022.
Proposal number 16, 2022, introduced by Counsel Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, establishing a vehicle inspection fee pursuant to Indiana Code 9-17-2-12, and a rebuilt salvage motor vehicle inspection fee pursuant to Indiana Code 9-22-3-15.
I believe that received a unanimous recommendation out of the Code Committee. Counsel Freeman? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion on proposal number 16? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number 18, 2022.
Proposal number 18, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a new schedule of sewer utility rates and charges.
Okay, that was recommended unanimously out of?
It was recommended out of finance as well.
Finance, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counsel Wells?
I'll second.
Second.
Second, Counsel Russell. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
No.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yea, one nay. Next, we have proposal number 19, 2022.
Proposal number 19, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, concerning acquisition, construction, or improvement of sewage works, authorizing issuance of sewage works revenue bonds for such purpose, providing for the collection, segregation, and distribution of revenues of sewage works, and safeguarding of interest of owners of sewage works revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith.
Hey, that received a unanimous recommendation out of?
Correct, that was also recommended out of finance, you know.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Maria can have it.
Motion, Counsel Rusa Moroff?
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Denny. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number 20, 2022.
Proposal number 20, 2022, introduced by Counsel Chevlat. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council amending Section 3-3-4-7 and Section 3-3-4-8 of the Lawrence Municipal Code with respect to litter violation notices.
That recommended unanimously?
It was, yes, but it was amended out of committee, so we'll need to accept the amended in.
Okay, so is that my motion?
That's your motion, yeah.
Motion to accept the amended version?
I'll second it.
Have a second? Okay, roll call vote. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number 18, 2022.
Proposal number 18, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a new schedule of sewer utility rates and charges.
Okay, that was recommended unanimously out of?
It was recommended out of finance as well.
Finance, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counsel Wells?
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Russell.
Yes.
Second, Counsel Russell. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlat?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number 18, 2022.
Proposal number 18, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a new schedule of sewer utility rates and charges.
Okay, that was recommended unanimously out of?
It was recommended out of finance as well.
Finance, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counsel Wells?
I'll second.
Second.
Second, Counsel Russell. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
No.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Okay, that was recommended unanimously out of.
It was recommended out of finance as well.
Finance, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counsel Wells.
I'll second.
Second.
Second, Counsel Russell. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
No.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Russo Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yay, one nay. Next, we have proposal number 19, 2022.
Proposal number 19, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of City of Lawrence, Indiana, concerning acquisition, construction, or improvement of sewage works, authorizing issuance of sewage works revenue bonds for such purpose, providing for the collection, segregation, and distribution of revenues of sewage works, and safeguarding of interest of owners of sewage works revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith.
Hey, that received a unanimous recommendation out of.
Correct. That was also recommended out of finance, you know.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Maria can have it.
Motion, Counsel Russo Moroff?
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Denny. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman? Counsel Russo Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number 20, 2022.
Proposal number 20, 2022, introduced by Counsel Chevlot. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council amending Section 3-3-4-7 and Section 3-3-4-8 of the Lawrence Municipal Code with respect to litter violation notices.
That recommended unanimously?
It was, yes, but it was amended out of committee, so we'll need to accept the amended and.
Okay, so is that my motion?
That's your motion, yeah.
Motion to accept the amended version?
I'll second it.
Have a second? Okay, roll call vote. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Russo Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous vote to accept the amended version. Is there a motion to approve the amended version?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Counsel Chevlot.
I'll second it.
Second, Counsel Wells. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Russo Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number 21, 2022.
Proposal number 21, 2022, introduced by Counsel Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title III, Article II, Chapter IV of the Lawrence Municipal Code with respect to event pardon.
That was approved, that was unanimous to move to the full counsel. Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion, Counsel Denny.
I'll second it.
Second, Counsel Wells. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counsel Wells.
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Russo Moroff?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Denny?
Yes.
Counsel Chevlot?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have new business. Proposal number 22, 2022.
Proposal number 22, 2022, introduced by Counsel Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of the City of Lawrence, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Bonds and the lending of the proceeds thereof to K G Fort LLC and authorizing and approving other action in respect thereto.
That will be assigned to finance. Next, we have proposal number 23, 2022.
Proposal number 23, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the City of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2023.
That'll be assigned to finance. Proposal number 24, 2022.
Proposal number 24, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance establishing compensation for elected officials for the City of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2023 and providing a time when the same shall take effect.
Okay, my own proposal number 24. Proposal number 24, 2022.
Yeah, I just read that, so that's going to go to.
Proposal number 25.
Is that going to finance?
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 So for the record, proposal number 23, 24, and 25, will all three go to finance? Proposal number 26, 2022.
Okay, I haven't read 25 yet.
He said 22, 23.
Read 25.
Yep, read 25 by titled, then 20.
Okay.
Read 25, then read 26.
Okay. Proposal number 25, 2022, introduced by Counsel Wells. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the Police Department and the Fire Department for the year 2023. Proposal number 26, 2022, introduced by Counsel Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2023 budget year.
Okay.
Is that going to finance?
Yep, all of those are financed, 23, 24, 25, and 26. They will be heard in finance first, as we've done in previous years, and then they will go to committee as a whole.
Okay, so 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26.
Yep. So finance committee, get your rest. Next, resolution number 13, 2022. Based on the information that was provided by Baker Tilly, I will be withdrawing that resolution. Next on the agenda is comments of the administration.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In the mayor's office, we receive a lot of emails, as you might imagine, from citizens voicing various concerns, compliments, some criticisms, of course, and we respond to all those professionally, as you would expect. This morning, one caught my eye, and I wanted to share it with you. I'm not going to read it to you verbatim, and you'll understand why here in just a second. But this is the information I learned this morning from an email from one of our citizens. And again, I'm kind of paraphrasing, and you'll see why here in just a second. On August 24th, a 911 call brought the Lawrence Fire Department and emergency medical technicians to a Lawrence address to help a man who had stopped breathing for more than a minute and was in serious distress. The 911 caller was the wife of the man. She gave very specific instructions to the medics to take her husband to St. Vincent's Hospital. The E M Ts quickly arrived and realized that the seriousness of the man's condition, they realized the seriousness of the man's condition, and decided for the health of the patient to take him to the nearest hospital, rather than the more distant St. Vincent's. Within a very short time of the initial call, the man had been admitted and was undergoing critical cardiac surgery. The surgeon later explained that this decision by medical first responders likely saved the man's life. The extra time it would have taken to get to St. Vincent's could have easily been deadly, and the blood clots in his body could have dislodged, and he would not have been able to breathe. The patient's wife recently emailed us to say, quote, "Thank you from the bottom of my heart for using your technical and medical skills to make the best medical decision for my husband's life. He did very well in surgery, and they removed between 35 and 40 blood clots from his pulmonary arteries. He is already home and doing well, and will be starting physical therapy next week. So again, thank you for your excellent care and quick thinking," end quote. Medics Erica Roth and Sean Schmidt will be recognized by Fire Chief Dean Opitalis for their great work and professionalism at a later date. But I wanted to bring this example of the great daily work by the Lawrence Fire Department and their personnel to your attention tonight, as I just received this email this morning. I just felt the time. And now, a couple of events. On September 17th, which is a week from this Saturday, the Friends of Fort Harrison State Park and the City of Lawrence will host our Fourth Annual Barbecue Blues Festival at Fort Harrison State Park. Food vendors will open at noon, and the first of four blues bands throughout the day will start at 1:00 P. M. and will continue until 7:00 P. M. The event is free with normal park admission. There will be tents and picnic tables provided and many shade trees, but guests are welcome to bring their own folding chairs, blankets, and supplies for a great fall day of food and music in the park. Number two, this year's Loggers in Lawrence Oktoberfest will see the return of the popular Steinholding Contest and the Wiener Dog Racing on Saturday, September 24th, which is a week after Barbecue Blues Festival, from 2:00 P. M. until 6:00 P. M. at the Cultural Campus. This annual fall favorite will feature a record number of Indiana breweries, wineries, and distilleries from all over the state, along with live polka music, German dancing, and much more. Tickets for this event can be purchased at loggersinlawrence.com or in person on the day of the event. And finally, last on my list, but number one in your hearts, Lawrence Utilities Superintendent Scott Salisbury was honored with the 2022 Professional of the Year Award at the Indiana Water Environment Association, or IWA, annual conference in Fort Wayne on August 15th. This annual, this annual award recognizes top water professionals in Indiana who demonstrate consistent dedication to preserving and protecting Indiana's waterways through safe and professional public watery, water delivery practices, and within a wide variety of industry-related topics such as operations, residuals, pre-treatment, safety, stormwater, and more. IWA is an organization dedicated to educating the citizens of Indiana about the importance of our water environment. And we just wanted to say congratulations to Scott Salisbury for his much-deserved recognition by this professional association. And that's all we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any citizens' comments? Anyone signed up for citizens' comments?
Curtis, can you see if there's any citizens?
Oh, there's none.
Oh, there's none, okay.
Seeing none, we adjourn.